Good morning. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. And before we convene our meeting, I will call on Councilmember Rainville to acknowledge the loss of Officer Jamal Mitchell.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Clerk. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for fallen Officer Jamal Mitchell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Rainville. And it's a real tragedy to have lost so many through gun violence. And before we get started, we have a few presentations of honorary resolutions. We are pleased to welcome guests to this space to share in these presentations before taking up our agenda. And I will invite Councilmember Osman to present the first resolution, which is to recognize the Somali Week Festival.
Good morning. Today, we're honoring Somali Week. Back in 2017, City of Minneapolis recognized July 1st as Somali-American Day. Honoring the Somali Week Festival. Somali Week Festival is a vibrant celebration of Somali culture, heritage, and community. Recognize it as the largest event of its kind outside of Somalia, drawing thousands of participants to Minneapolis each year. And whereas the festival marks the significant occasion of the Somali diaspora, providing an opportunity to celebrate Somali Independence Day, reflecting on the history, the struggle, and the triumphant of Somali since its independence, July 1st, 1960. The Somali Week Festival showcases Somali arts, music, fashion, cuisine, and fostering a greater understanding and appreciation of Somali culture among all residents of Minneapolis, promoting multiculturalism and unity. And whereas, the mission of Somali Week is to promote cross-cultural exchange and deepen the community understanding of its rich cultural heritage and significant contribution of the Somali-American community. And whereas, the Somali Week Festival aligns with Minneapolis' value of diversity, inclusion, and community celebration, reinforcing the city's commitment to recognizing and honoring the rich tapestry of culture that constitutes its population. And whereas, the Somali community throughout their resilience and vibrant cultural expression continues to inspire and contribute to the broader narrative of immigrants' success and integration in Minneapolis. And whereas, the Somali community has been an integral part of Minneapolis for decades, significantly contributing to the cultural, economy, and social fabric of our city, enriching it with their tradition, business, community engagement. And whereas, under the stewardship of Kajjuk, this event was transformed from the community-centric celebration into the Somali Week Festival. And now, a citywide cultural event that invites participants from general community to foster broader connection and relationships. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby honor the Somali Week Festival as a significant cultural event in Minneapolis, celebrating the Somali community's contribution to our city, promoting the value and diversity and inclusion. And further, that July 1st, 2024, be recognized as the Somali Cultural Day in the city of Minneapolis, acknowledging the endurance and spirit of cultural richness of the Somali community. And now, I would like to welcome Madfara from Kajjuk, who has been part of this Somali Week Festival for many, many years.
Thank you so much, Councilman Jamal Osman. Good morning, members of the city council, distinguished guests, and fellow community members. This morning, we're actually making a history, a big history. You know, Minneapolis is full of many, many amazing cultures. It's a melting pot. And you know, what we're doing today is celebrate one of those cultures as we continue to celebrate the amazing cultures that bring us together. And that's actually the strength that we have. That's the common, there's many commonalities that we have across Minneapolis. And that's what I call One Minneapolis. Today, we gather to celebrate this significant milestone for our city and the Somali-American community with the passing of this resolution honoring the Somali Week. The Somali Week is more than just a celebration. It commemorates Somalia's Independence Day, which is July 1st, 1960, reflecting the history, the struggle, and the triumph of the Somali-American people. The event embraces rich cultural expression through arts, music, dance, fashion, and cuisine. Somali Week is not just a celebration, but it has become a platform for discussions, for connecting one another. It's beyond the Somali community. And more and more non-Somalis are coming to celebrate Somali Week. And that's exactly the point why we have started this particular program over a decade ago. The mission of Somali Week is to promote cross-cultural exchange and deepen our community's understanding of the Somali-American community, rich culture and heritage, and significant contribution. The Somali community's resilient and vibrant cultural expression continues to inspire and contribute to the broader narrative of American success and integration in Minneapolis. For decades, the Somali community has been a vital part of our city, significantly contributing to its cultural, economic, and social fabric. Their traditions, businesses, and the community engagement enriches our city in countless ways. Under the stewardship of this amazing organization, Somali Week Festival has transformed from a community-centric celebration into a citywide cultural event. Today, as we officially honor the Somali Week Festival, we celebrate the Somali community's contribution to our city, and reaffirm our commitment to the values of diversity and inclusion. I am proud to announce that July 1st, 2024, will be recognized as the Somali Cultural Day in the city of Minneapolis. I would like to thank city councilmember Jamal Osman, and also the amazing city councils members that we have, and our mayor as well, and for the guests and the community members that are here. And again, what brings us, what makes Minneapolis strong is the amazing cultures that we have across the city. And I'm amazed, and I love being part of this amazing city as we continue to be an example city across this great nation of ours. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. This year, June 29th is the start date of Somali Week on Lake Street, so please join and have fun. You might have a camel ride when you get there today. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilmembers Chowdhury and Chavez to, and Osman, to recognize Immigrant Heritage Month, World Refugee Day, and Caribbean American Heritage Month.
Hello. Good morning. We're just so happy today to be recognizing Immigrant Heritage Month, World Refugee, and Caribbean American Heritage Month all in the month of June. This is really a way to kind of celebrate the resilience, contributions of all of these communities, especially represented here in the city of Minneapolis. I just want to take a moment to really thank Tate Nguyen, Michelle Rivero, Muwende Nazimbi for contributing to this resolution. And just making sure that every year, we're up here recognizing these important months and important dates because our histories continue to grow within the city of Minneapolis. And we're really celebrating this across the nation. And World Refugee Day is an international celebration. So, thank you so much for being here. And I will have Councilmember Osman kick us off.
Wonderful. Recognizing Immigrant Heritage Month, a World Refugee Day, and Caribbean American Heritage Month. Whereas, Minnesota-Macausi is the ancestral homeland of the Dakota and Ojibwe Native Nations, who have long stewarded this land and which we reside. And whereas, the vast majority of the current United States population is made up of people whose ancestors were born outside of this land, outside of this country. And whereas, the United States has long been recognized as a nation where immigrants, refugees from all over the world have played a pivotal role in this shaping our country's cultural, social, and economic fabric. And whereas, Immigrant Heritage Month, which was first recognized in 2014, provides an opportunity to celebrate the shared experience and stories of immigrants, to honor their journey and contribution, and to affirm our shared commitment to fostering a society welcoming to immigrants in our communities. And...
And whereas, World Refugee Day was run June 20th every year, acknowledges the strength and courage of millions of refugees forced to flee their home countries due to conflict, persecution, or natural disasters, and highlights the need for global solidarity and support for their plight. And whereas, Caribbean American Heritage Month, first recognized in 2006, is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the Caribbean-American community in the United States, to note that the majority of Caribbean Americans have roots in Cuba, the Dominican Republic, Jamaica, Haiti, Trinidad, and Tobago, and to remember and honor the notable Caribbean Americans who have contributed to our shared history and culture, including, including, among many, Alexander Hamilton, the first Secretary of the Treasury, Colin Powell, the first person of color appointed as a Secretary of State, James Weldon Johnson, the writer of the Black National Anthem, musician Celia Cruz, the queen of salsa, and Shirley Chisholm, the first African-American Congresswoman and the first African-American woman candidate for president. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis, over 63,000 people, identify as immigrants and refugees, not including the descendants of immigrants and refugees. Furthermore, in the Twin Cities area, over 200,000 children or 1 in 4 children have an immigrant parent, and over 100 languages are spoken by families and children enrolled in MPS schools. All testaments to the truly global nature of our society.
And whereas, immigrants and refugees and their descendants, including Caribbean Americans, bring invaluable perspectives, skills, and experiences to our city and nation. And whereas, the preservation and promotion of the diverse languages and cultures of immigrants and refugees, including Caribbean Americans and their descendants, is vital to maintaining the rich tapestry of our society and shaping our collective identity as a nation. A nation whose inhabitants share more similarities than differences, regardless of our country of origin, language, ethnicity, or culture. And whereas, while people born outside the United States are very much included in and are not spared the risks of life and safety that come from living in this country, including subjugation to acts motivated by hate, death by gunfire, continuing health impacts as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and more, these individuals are simultaneously often prevented from accessing opportunity and necessity, necessities due to factors such as legal status, language barriers, lack of financial sources, and limited availability of healthcare delivery that is respectful of diverse cultural backgrounds and norms. And whereas, while we celebrate immigrants and refugees, including Caribbean Americans this month, we recognize that people who have come to the United States from another country, regardless of pathway or status, are more than their immigration classification. Once within this nation's borders, many become integral members of our communities, often contributing to our collective strength and prosperity. For descendants who are children, or grandchildren, or great-grandchildren of people whose first home was not the United States of America, we owe our very existence to this journey, the strength and resiliency of our ancestors, and the welcome granted by this country and its residents. Whereas, the city of Minneapolis is a welcoming city, one that supports residents in achieving lives of safety, dignity, and opportunity, including through supporting civic engagement, entrepreneurial activity, employment opportunities with upward mobility, including employment with the city of Minneapolis, protection from discrimination, and opportunities to achieve more secure immigration status, up to and including the United States citizenship. And whereas, a commitment to fostering society where all residents are able to achieve their highest potential includes a commitment to dismantling barriers based upon ethnicity and national origin that restrict access to immigration status, employment authorization, and freedom of movement within our nation. The city of Minneapolis, in the city of Minneapolis, this commitment is visible through the actions of many, including the immigrant and refugee-led initiatives to ensure that newer residents are able to establish a foothold in our society. In this respect, the welcomed becomes the welcomeer. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby celebrate the immigrant, celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month, World Refugee Day, and Caribbean American Heritage Month in the city of Minneapolis by recognizing the importance of immigrants and refugees and their descendants, including Caribbean Americans, in our city, state, and country, and encourage residents of the city of Minneapolis to recognize and observe these opportunities to celebrate, learn, and share information about the history and the contribution of immigrants and refugees and their descendants, including Caribbean Americans, to our city, state, and nation. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. I now want to open up the floor to whoever wants to speak.
If you don't mind.
Yes, of course.
Okay, cool. Before we begin, I just wanted to thank our city staff for all their incredible work on those resolutions. These don't just come from councilmembers. They come from our staff that really work behind the scenes to bring this to light, to bring these topics to the city council for us to honor and recognize. So I just want to make sure that we're recognizing our city staff for their incredible work on this. I know all of you here are a really important part of our city that make this city run, and your dedication to our city is really important. And really appreciate the resolution that you all have written and brought this forward to. The other part I did want to recognize, in our immigrant community right now, it's in a lot of pain. Our federal government is rising its attack on our asylum seekers, our immigrant and refugee community members. It's something that I personally stand fully against. And it's, it's on. But just want to make sure that we're acknowledging the pain in our immigrant community right now. And these are important resolutions to acknowledge the contributions and the history of our residents, our immigrant or Caribbean-American or refugee residents. But at the same time, we need to be demanding more from our federal government, who is treating our immigrants unfairly right now. So I want to make sure that we don't leave that part out because it's a lot of fear in our community right now, and there's a lot of pain. But yeah, we want to make sure our city staff is also recognized and with all that, too.
Xin chào. Đôi đón la tay, đôi lam chò. The Department of Neighborhood and Community Relations. Immigration Heritage Month, to me, is significant as the child of immigrants. And I'm excited to be here today to celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month.
Dozalapa, diguna zabi maharzan ka di city of Minneapolis napo jainatzen na. Ale di Mira grupo trezor nuenakoa, sube.
Carlos, my name is Carlos. Work for the city of Minneapolis in the Departamento de Informatica. Work for the city of Minneapolis and work for the IT department.
Sabadik, can I say, Narin Siivong, head work you, Moen Minneapolis. My name is Narin Siivong. I work for CPED. I'm originally from Laos. I came as a refugee in 1978. I live in Hawaii, Laos, Thailand, Washington DC, now here. Happy to call Minnesota, Minneapolis, my home. Our goal is to make people and everyone feel welcome as they've made me feel welcome, my family, and also the rest of my colleagues and our friends, recent arrivals, and also friends and other colleagues.
Kumbe Jimmy Yang. My name is Jimmy Yang, and I work at the city of Minneapolis in the IT department.
Mi chamo Michelle Rivero. Lavoro per la Cita di Minneapolis. My name is Michelle Rivero. I work for the city of Minneapolis. I'm very grateful that this resolution was advanced by city council members today. Thank you very much. The individuals who are here represent so many different cultures. I think it's important for people to see the many cultures represented in our city in positions of leadership. And our city staff wanted to take a moment to introduce themselves in their own native languages or the languages of their communities so that people in the city would be able to hear their own languages spoken here up on the dais. So thank you all very much for doing that. Immigrant Heritage Month, World Refugee Day, Caribbean American Heritage Month are all incredible opportunities for people to remember their roots, to honor communities that are here, that are represented, that make contributions to our society. And the Minneapolis Immigrant and Refugee Alliance Employee Resource Group and the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs have put together a number of events this month. I just want to share a couple for folks in case you're interested. There is going to be a Citizenship and Immigration Fair this Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at 627 West Broadway in North Minneapolis at the Open Door Learning Center. So invite people to learn more at the OIRA webpage, O-I-R-A Minneapolis. And also for city employees, there's a calendar of events, including a Wisdom of the Elders panel that will be placed later this month on June 27th. And information about that is available on the Mira team's channel. So thank you very much, and council members. Thank you to city staff.
And now, as a council member, we have almost four immigrants or their parents being immigrants. And thank you for this staff, for really speaking our language. We thought we'll do the same, introduce our names, and close it down. And thank you. Maga egua Jamal Osman. Wahan katar sana hai city of Minneapolis, council memberska. Adiyat beumehesintin mantaya naklosuakibkashen.
Asalam alaikum. Amar nam Orion Chowdhury. I'm a council member, Ward 12 of City of Minneapolis. Oneg donobad for, oneg donobad for resolution askia. Oneg bhal lakse.
Asalam alaikum. My name is Asha Choktai He. And I'm a Minneapolis City Council Vice President. Who, and boh chokriakap sabianpeai. It's a, it means a lot. Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Jason Chavez. Soy miembro del Consejo Municipal del Distrito Nueve. Estoy bien orgulloso de estar aquí con la comunidad y nuestros empleados. Just said, my name is Jason Chavez, council member of the 9th Ward. Very proud to be here with our city staff.
Next, we will welcome up Sylvia Gonzalez. Oh, photo, photo, photo. Now, we will welcome up Sylvia Gonzalez to recognize her retirement.
All right. Vamos a empezar. We're gonna get started. One, I just want, today we're reading a resolution honoring Sylvia Gonzalez for her 30 years of service and dedication to the city of Minneapolis. I think we should all clap before we begin. 30 years, that is a big milestone, and we're really proud of our city staff. Okay, so, as I mentioned earlier, we're honoring Sylvia Gonzalez for her 30 years of service and dedication to the city of Minneapolis. Whereas, and we're all gonna be reading it, so... Whereas, Sylvia Gonzalez is retiring from the city of Minneapolis after 30 years of outstanding service. She has been a sister, a leader, an ally, and a collaborator, community member, and as Minneapolis racial equity coordinator, a fierce mentor and advocate for marginalized communities.
And whereas, Sylvia has been a Minneapolis resident since the age of five and prior to coming to work for the city. She was a licensed journey person, electrician. Sylvia is the first woman of color to obtain an electrician's license and a certified building official license in the state of Minnesota. And...
Whereas, in 1994, she began working for the city as an electrical inspector. And as her career with Minneapolis evolved, she moved into the roles of building inspector, lead building inspector, and for the past six years, she has been a district supervisor with the Construction Code Services Division.
Whereas, Sylvia holds countless professional certifications and licenses in the building, electrical, and mechanical trades, and serves as a secretary on the Board of Directors of the Association of Minnesota Building Officials. In addition, her emergency management certificate and training provided the necessary skills to assist the Minneapolis emergency management team with planned events, such as the Super Bowl and Final Four, and unexpected events, tornadoes, civil unrest, fire damage on properties. Whereas, throughout the entirety of her career here at the city, Sylvia has been a registered Spanish interpreter. She utilized her bilingual skills to assist Spanish speakers navigate the complexities in business, zoning, regulatory services, and inspection systems and processes. And whereas, she was awarded the 2023 International Cold Council Trailblazer Award, which recognizes her excellent work in mentoring and leading the next generation of building safety professionals. Whereas, in addition to all these professional accomplishments, Sylvia has also found time to actively participate in and lead multiple employee resource groups. Sylvia is the co-chair for the Somos Latinx Employee Resource Group. She collaborates and is a member of the Women of Minneapolis Employee Network Women ERG, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network MBEN, and the CPED RIDE Racial Equity Inclusion Diversity Equity and Equity Committee. And whereas Sylvia has been a fierce advocate and role model for the members of the Women of Minneapolis Employee Network Women ERG and women employees across the city, Sylvia inspires women to bring their whole selves to their work and to show compassion for one another and celebrate one another. Sylvia continues as a guiding light for all to have confidence in their ability to lead from where they are at.
Whereas, Ms. Gonzalez has played a key role in the Somos Latino Employee Resource Group since its inception in two thousand and nineteen. In her Somos leadership, Sylvia has supported efforts to welcome new employees, build connections and friendships between the Latino community and make the city between employees often opening her own home, raise awareness of Latino history and cultures in the US, celebrate contributions of the Latino community, and make the City of Minneapolis a better, more welcoming workplace for everyone. She has also supported equity and city hiring, promoting, and staffing policies, including cities pandemic furlough impacts.
Whereas Sylvia will be deeply missed by the many people of the City of Minneapolis who she impacted as a leader, an advocate, and a friend. Let's congratulate Sylvia on her outstanding thirty years' career with the City of Minneapolis and with her will in her retirement.
We're gonna make Sylvia read it. The last part. It's in lentas. I will do it, I'll do it. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby honor Sylvia Gonzalez for her commitment to and many contributions to the City of Minneapolis and send her best wishes in the future endeavors in her retirement. Yep, and we're gonna have Steve say a few words. Let's use this mic, because that one sounds a little...
Good morning, everyone, it's my distinct pleasure to present Sylvia with her father of water statue, there you go, after thirty years of service. I've worked along Sylvia for many years. When I started in zoning, I worked when she was a building inspector. Often we'd hear stories about how helpful Sylvia was in the field, excuse me, with constituents, not just her own language, but about just navigating city hall. One of the hallmarks of Sylvia's services, she was a very pragmatic person, so when she'd be out in the field dealing with homeowners on issues, she was able to kind of make it understandable when there was code issues and make it easier for them to work through problems. Sylvia also brought a lot of continuity to the Construction Code Services Business Unit. Over the years, CCS, as we called it, has moved around from different departments, but one constant in that for thirty years has been Sylvia's service to the city. And that kind of service is really important to the staff as we welcome new people. I think it's fair to say Joanne is here because of your efforts in trying to bring in more women into the field, and thank you for that, Joanne, it's working out great for us. So it's again, my pleasure to present this to Sylvia. We will miss you and thank you for all the years of service, and there is a celebration over at the Crown Roller Mill. You're welcome to all join us, I think the weather's gonna hold and that starts at eleven thirty. So again, let's give a big round of applause for Sylvia for her years of service, and thank you so much Sylvia. And Sylvia, before we give you the resolution, did you want to say a few words? And I'm happy to hold that for you.
When I was young, I was lost in a world of confusion. I was caught up in the world of Anglo society, confused by the rules, scorned by the attitudes, suppressed by manipulation, and the need to belong and to be accepted. This is from a poem by Corky Gonzalez, no relative, but we share the same last name. I'm no longer that young person, but I'm a wiser, confident, unapologetic Mexicana, and I am a proud Mexicana, although not Mexican enough for some and too Mexican for others, ni de aqui, ni de allá. I am so proud to be able to witness the first female president from Mexico and on this continent, Claudia Scheinbaum. As a Somos Latinx Chair, I wanted to educate myself and others to the beauty and the uniqueness of our Latinx culture, our color, our language, our histories. And as members of Somos, we achieved that goal by providing a window to cultural agility, and because of that collaboration, we were able to create a wonderful friendships that are based on respect and acceptance. I have enjoyed my work as a public servant. My job is in public safety and enforcing building codes that will keep folks safe in their homes and in their businesses. Educating folks on why we enforce a code is paramount to compliance. We must do the work with compassion and empathy. I want to thank my colleagues, employees, leaders, and residents, and the council members for all that you have taught me. It has been my pleasure to serve you. It has been a wild ride, it has come with its ups and downs, and my retirement is bittersweet. I thought that I would walk away feeling elated, but I find myself fighting hard to let go, to allow myself just to be. So I will move on to my next chapter, hoping that I made this city a better place to work and live, and I thank you all so much for this resolution and honoring me today.
I don't know if any of Sylvia's colleagues want to say anything else, otherwise we can just take a photo, but, okay, we'll take a photo, but Sylvia, you did make a difference.
Thank you for those presentations, and with that, I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the City Council for June thirteenth to order. I'll note that council members Jenkins, Koski, and Cashman are away, but I will ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Koski is absent, councilmember Wansley?
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins is absent, councilmember Palmasano?
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Present.
Councilmember Cashman is absent, councilmember Osman?
Present.
Councilmember Rainville is absent, councilmember Chavez?
Present.
Councilmember Vitah?
Present.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Vice President Chugthai?
Present.
Councilmember Rainville?
Present.
President Payne?
Present.
There are ten members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us, are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wansley?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Vice President Chugthai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and the agenda is adopted. Next is the acceptance of our May twenty-third meeting minutes, may I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Koski, I'm sorry, councilmember Wansley?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Vice President Chugthai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and those minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees, may I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Wansley?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Vice President Chugthai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and those matters have been referred to the next cycle. The next order of business is the presentation of reports from our standing committees. Those reports are taken up in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its chair, councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, President Payne. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward twenty-two items for approval. The first eight are gift acceptances for travel and lodging, the ninth is a gift acceptance from local progress of registration, travel, and lodging expenses, ten is a bid for refuge packer bodies and tipper assemblies, eleven is a bid for Minneapolis Convention Center Meeting Room remodel phase two, twelve is a bid for green central safe routes to school projects, thirteen is a bid for pond land care vegetation management, fourteen is a contract with various vendors for the large greenhouse gas reduction projects, fifteen is a contract with information requirements clearinghouse to update and enhance the retention schedule to ensure it meets current compliance standards, sixteen is a contract with Bolton and Mink Inc. for layout engineering and design services for the thirty-fifth slash thirty-six Street East-West Reconstruction Project, seventeen is a contract with Emergency Management Services International Inc. for the National Incident Management System Reset Exercise Maintenance, eighteen is a contract with National Testing Network for Public Safety Psychological Assessments, nineteen is a contract amendment with Pillsbury Winthrop Shaw Pittman LLP for Continue IT Sourcing Consulting Services, twenty is a contract amendment with Versacon Inc. for the Minneapolis Convention Center Meeting Room one oh-three renovation project, and twenty-one is a contract amendment with Hillcrest Development for Public Works Parking at nine hundred Sixth Avenue Southeast, and twenty-two is a legal settlement claim of Dennis Soski v. City of Minneapolis. And with all that, I will move all the items for approval and stand for any questions.
Councilmember Wansley has moved the committee's report for approval, is there any discussion? Vice President Chugthai?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to pull item eleven from this committee's report and make a subsequent motion to send this item back to committee, and I'm happy to speak to that once we complete the committee's report.
Vice President Chugthai has pulled item eleven, we will take that up after taking up the rest of the consent items. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the consent items? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on all items except item number eleven.
Councilmember Wansley?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Vice President Chugthai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and those items have been approved. Next, I will call on Vice President Chugthai to speak to item number eleven.
Thank you, Mr. President, I am, yesterday afternoon, councilmember Koski and I, in our roles as Budget Committee Chair and Vice Chair, began a conversation with councilmember Wansley regarding item number eleven, which is a thirteen million dollar contract for remodeling a meeting room in the convention center. And wanted to, you know, in that time since, we have had an opportunity to just briefly connect with our CFO and our budget director along with our city attorney, but we have not had any substantive conversations around a potential path forward or any implications around that, and so want to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of time to get any potential changes right, but, you know, the motivation coming from trying to address the significant issues that we are facing with our financial constraints and new expenses that we really need to prioritize and consider. So for that reason, I'm moving that we send this item back to committee for just one cycle, thank you.
Vice President Chugthai has moved to refer item number eleven back to the AO Committee, is there a second? There is a second, I will call on councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, Vice President Payne, and as Council Vice President, Chugthai mentioned, we had an opportunity to touch base briefly yesterday around this item, they're working and they, councilmember Koski and Council Vice President Chugthai will be coordinating a meeting amongst my staff, myself with city staff to just get a little bit more information about the questions, but outside of that, have no problem with having this item be received back to committee as we have those continued conversations throughout the next cycle.
Thank you for those remarks, is there any other discussion on this motion to refer this item back to committee? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wansley?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Vice President Chugthai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and that full report is adopted. Next is the report from our Budget Committee presented by Vice President Chugthai.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Budget Committee is bringing forward three items today. Item number one is passage of a resolution approving the equalization of assessed evaluations of real and personal property as recommended by the twenty-twenty-four Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. Item number two is adopting findings and approving the salary schedule for the appointed position in the city attorney's office of the city attorney, and item number three is authorizing the city council president and vice president to transmit to the mayor budget recommendations proposed for the Legislative Department for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget, I will move approval of the Budget Committee's report.
Vice President Chugthai has moved approval of the Budget Committee's report, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wansley?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye on one and two, no on item three.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Vice President Chugthai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are ten ayes on the report except for number three, which has nine ayes and one nay.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next is the Business Housing and Zoning Committee Report presented by that committee's chair, councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Mr. President, Business Housing and Zoning Committee will be forwarding thirteen items for approval and one item without recommendation. Item one, approving on sale liquor with Sunday sales, general entertainment license for Auburn Daisy. Item two, approving a permanent expansion off-premises license for sea salt eatery. Item three is approving on sale liquor license with Sunday sales and general entertainment, two AM license for Basset Hound. Item four is considering a certificate of non-conforming use appeal at thirty-four fifty-two Lindell Avenue South. Item five is approving two liquor license. Item six is approving eighteen liquor license renewal. Item seven is approving three gambling license. Item eight is approving a commercial to residential convention conversion of land sale analysis staff direction. sale analysis staff direct, direction for the City Attorney's Office. Item nine is approving a legislative directive regarding a task force to exam, enforce of unlawful home occupation. Item ten is authorizing exclusive development rights to the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for Permanent Community Garden Pilot Program. Item eleven is approving commemorative street name addition to add Spike Moss Way to Blimith Avenue North between Newton North and Lindell Avenue North. Item twelve is approving up to four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in fiscal year 2022 Emergency Solution Grant Fund for Rabbit Hou- Re-Housing. I'm also moving to amend this item to add authorization of, of a joint powers agreement with Hennepin County for Emergency Solution Grant Shelter Operation Fund for one year. You will all have that receipt, you all, you should all have that received RCA in front of you. Item thirteen is authorizing Business Technical Assistant Program, BTAP, for 2024 funding recommendations. Item, and item fourteen is approving rezoning of several parcels of Van Bureau Street Northeast, nine oh one Summer Street Northeast, from the BFC six corridor six built form overlay district to the BF thirteen interior three building form overlay district. I'll move approval of all items except item four and approve of the amended item twelve. Thank you, President.
Councilmember Osman has moved approval of the committee's report except for item four and with item twelve with the amendment that's before you. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the consent items other than item four and twelve? Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to speak briefly to item eight, which will be more follow-up with a, a request from Councilmember Cashman and I, but this is just the start of trying to produce more housing for some of these commercial, empty commercial buildings that we, we all know, we all agree, we need more housing, and this is the start of the process to help us understand how we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to speak on item number two, Sea Salt Eatery, which is submitting a permanent expansion of premises license. Just wanted to give them a shout out for the tremendous work that they've been doing in the community. Sea Salt Eatery is a beloved restaurant that serves fresh seafood right at Minnehaha Regional Park. It's been a staple, staple for the neighborhood and many of the people who enjoy the city of Minneapolis across the region. I also want to shout out the fact that they have expanded to opening up a sandwich shop at the location and just have tremendously appreciated getting to know the owners and then also eating at Sea Salt as a, a young girl growing up and just am excited to see this item come before us and help move this business forward into their next chapter.
Thank you for those comments. Is there any other discussion on items less, item number four? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
Those items carry. Next, we will take up item number four. I will call on Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council President Payne. I'm gonna move to continue this item. We're having some discussion, ongoing discussions with city attorneys and staff, and I'm happy to expand on that if we want to have a discussion here on the dais, but I'm also happy to talk to colleagues offline about what, about what's going on with this item. But I'm pretty confident that it's highly technical, but I'm pretty confident that we are gonna be able to be at a decision point by the next cycle.
Councilmember Ellison has moved to continue this item to the next council meeting. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That item carries and the full report is adopted. Next is the Climate and Infrastructure Committee Report, presented by Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward nine items. Item one through six are approving deviations from the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances for large block and business district block permit applications. One is Taste of Minnesota. Two is the Print Celebration, celebrating the fortieth anniversary of Purple Rain. Three is the Promenade du Nord Event. Four is Thursday's Downtown on Nicolet Mall. Five is the annual Saloon Pride Block Party. And six is the Flip Zone Event. Item number seven is accepting the Local Road Improvement Program grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the construction of ADA ramps in the Fair, Farview South Residential Project. Item number eight is authorizing the execution of an MOU between the city and the institution, or the Institute for Market Transformation for a project focused on community-centered building performance policy development. Item number nine is authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Environmental Protection Agency for the development of three resilience hubs. I'll move these items for approval.
Councilmember Chowdhury has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to highlight item number one, the Taste of Minnesota Large Block Permit, Large Block Permit. The Downtown Council's Large Block Event Permit, which will run the whole summer, and then the Flip Zone Permit, which is for the USA Olympics, which will be here. Eyes of the world will be upon us as we have our gymnasts qualify for the Olympics in Paris. And it just shows how important these events are to bring back downtown and reinvigorate our city. And thank you. I encourage all of you to vote for these, and I want to thank all the, all the hard work that's gone into creating these events as we revigilize downtown Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rainville. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to talk about item number five quickly, the Saloon Block Party. Happy Pride, y'all. It's the, it's the month of June. I'll see y'all at the saloon.
You're a poet.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, he is a mayor of the saloon.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The Committee of the Hall is the next report, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Hall is bringing forward two items. Item number one is a grant agreement with the State of Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for the Lake Street Fund and the property acquisition of eighteen-sixty Twenty-Eighth Street East and Twenty-seven Seventeenth Longfellow Avenue South. As you all know, that's the Roof Depot site. And item number two is referring to the Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee consideration of the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers' Federation. I move approval of both items.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the Inter-Governmental Relations Committee Report, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Inter-Governmental Relations Committee is bringing forward two items for approval. Number one is a passage of a resolution related to the local approval of a special law for liquor licenses for the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board premises. Item number two is a passage of a resolution supporting the Brittany Clarity Missing and Murdered Black Women and Girls Act. With that, I'll move all of these items for approval. I believe there is a motion to amend number two. That'll be brought forward by Councilmember Vitah.
Councilmember Chowdhury has moved approval of the committee's report, and I will call on Councilmember Vitah to speak to that item.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I am moving to amend the resolution. Councilmember Jenkins is not here today, but she would like me to amend it. There are two whereas clauses. The first one is whereas when we say women, that word always includes trans women. There are no ifs, ands, or buts about it, and women's gender identity is her innermost concept of being female. A trans woman's gender identity doesn't define a caveat, her wom- her womanhood. It simply describes her journey to womanhood. And whereas black trans women have disproportionately been targeted by vicious attacks of violence and murder, according to the Human Rights Campaign, sixty-two percent of victims of fatal violence are black transgender women. So I would like that to be included, and I also have some comments from Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you for that. Is there a second?
Second.
And I will call on Councilmember Vitah for those comments.
Thank you, Chair. This, I'm just gonna be reading this from Councilmember Jenkins, who's not with us, but wanted me to. June is LGBTQIA plus Pride Month, and as such, it is imperative that this resolution supporting Missing and Murdered Black Women and Girls act in, act as fully inclusive of all women. The black feminist movement is very clear that a feminism does not include trans women is incomplete in its analysis and practice. In 2023, thirty-three black and brown trans women have been murdered so far, and in 2024, at least sixteen trans women have been murdered, according to the Human Rights Campaign, HRC. It is tragic and disgusting that black women's lives are so deeply devalued, and it is even worse for trans identified black women. I implore my colleagues on this body to do the right thing and include this amendment to this critically important resolution, and know that Councilmember Jenkins and I will be reaching out to Congresswoman Omar to ensure its safe inclusion in her federal bill as well. Thank you.
Thank you for those remarks. Councilmember Ellison.
Just wanted to co-sign this, and, you know, I know we're all gonna support this, but I, I just want to thank Councilmember Jenkins and Councilmember Vitah for highlighting this. Yeah, when we talk about violence against black women, we have to include trans women in that conversation, and I know that, you know, you know, in my, in my early twenties, as somebody who's always considered myself in solidarity and as an ally, it was, it was the C.C. McDonald case that really brought home just how much it is not only dangerous to be a black trans woman, but you can't even defend yourself against violence without being, without the system coming down on your head in an aggressive way. And so I think this is super, super important, and just wanted to, again, thank my colleagues for bringing this amendment forward.
Bless you.
Thank you for that. Is there any other discussion? I will have the clerk call the roll on both items, including item two as amended.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The final report will be offered by our Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, which is also Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward one item, which is accepting a grant from Hennepin County to continue mental health services at school-based clinics. With that, I'll move for approval and stand for questions.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Thank you, colleagues. That completes the reports of all of our standing committees. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions, and there is one notice today. Councilmembers Rainville and Cashman give notice that they will introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the zoning code that will streamline the review of non-residential to residential building conversions. Is there any questions on that notice? I'll call on Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to give kudos to Councilmember Cashman for joining me with this. There are a lot of empty buildings in that warehouse district in particular. There's empty buildings all over the city, and we had a great report from the Urban Land Institute giving us ideas on how to add more housing into our city, and this will, through the dedicated and smart work of our staff, we're gonna figure this out and start taking those empty buildings. In particular, I, I want to see workforce housing. I think that's a great, great need. People who work in downtown should be able to walk to work and have low-cost housing. So I would appreciate a vote on this from all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rainville. That notice is hereby given, so no further action is required at this time, but I'm sure we're all looking forward to supporting that when it comes.
I'm planning ahead. I'm asking for that vote now.
The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. Councilmembers Wonsley and Ellison move to introduce and give first reading to an ordinance amending the Housing Maintenance Code to amend provisions related to the payment of tenant relocation assistance to be referred to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee. Is there any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries, and those matters will be referred to those committees in the next cycle. Next is the order of resolutions. There are three honorary resolutions today listed on the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers on any of those resolutions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt all three of those resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries, and those resolutions are adopted. Colleagues, will now take up any announcements? Do any councilmembers have announcements to share this morning? Councilmember Wan, I'm sorry, Vitak.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that Juneteenth is this coming Wednesday, and there's going to be lots of celebrations in North Minneapolis. Starting with today, there's going to be some panel discussions at the Capri Theater beginning at 4:30. Michelle Gibson is hosting several events tonight, and then the original Juneteenth Committee is having a big celebration in the park at Bethune Park on Saturday. That's going to be going on pretty much all day. And then another event on Saturday is the North Side Juneteenth Festival on Broadway. So lots of Juneteenth events, and it's also a national holiday. We are all so grateful for that. And what's happening at U-Rock? There's a Juneteenth, they're everywhere. There's one, there's one at U-Rock per Councilmember Ellison, and so please, colleagues, get out, come over to the North Side and enjoy a full weekend of Juneteenth festivities.
It's a city holiday.
Yes, Wednesday is a city holiday.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you. Colleagues, you'll receive more information about, well, actually, you have an email in your inbox about this, but this is related to the police contract, which we spent the past couple of days reviewing. I just want to let folks know how we're going to be approaching it in AO over the next cycle. So next Tuesday at 10:00 AM, we are going to have city staff give the typical presentation on the contract, and then that will be followed by a presentation from the Minneapolis for a Better Police Contract Coalition. And then we will have a public comment that can then either be tendered to in person. Also, the public can submit comments. Also, we'll be sharing the email information for that with you all.